This regular meeting of the Waco Independent School Board is hereby called to order. All items which may be discussed or voted upon this evening have been posted as required by state law. I extend a warm welcome to those present and to our television viewers. The Board's purpose is to set goals, listen to reports of the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personal appointments, and make policy for the district. We're not here to make management decisions or solve problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the superintendent and her staff. I ask that you turn your cell phones to silent if you have not already done so. We appreciate this time you have taken to join us and for your interest in the Waco Independent School District. Did anybody sign up for public comment? No, all right. I don't have to read that. Now we'll move on to the moment of silence. Please pause with me as we take time for prayer, contemplation, reflection, or meditation. And now we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance.
Tonight I would like to welcome to us from Dean Highland Elementary School, they are students Emmanuel Lopez and Adrian Alonza Gait.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, if the Board will meet in front of the dais to honor our special recognitions.
And I would like to recognize our pledge leaders. First, we have Emmanuel Lopez. He is the son of Ivan Flores. Emmanuel is in the fifth grade and enjoys soccer, video games, and playing the guitar. He has not yet decided what he wants to be when he grows up. Adrian is in the fourth grade and also enjoys playing soccer and video games. He already knows that he wants a career in music. Thank you to both of our fine pledge leaders this evening. And we are now recognizing our Waco ISD elementary students who earned top honors at the Texas Elementary Art Meet, also known as TEAM. The purpose of TEAM is to provide a collegiate assessment, now remember, these are elementary students, a collegiate assessment for individual elementary art, student art, based on the standards of TECS, Bloom's Taxonomy, and Feldman's Model. Additionally, TEAM provides constructive criticism, actual feedback, for the students' literary and expressive process. There are thousands of kids that compete in TEAM every year, and we have several schools that have won this year. We're going to start with Bell's Hill Elementary School. We're going to start with Adomari Juarez. Adomari's painting was "The Bridge of Jesus," and her teacher is with us this evening, Marilissa Young, and her principal is Kristy Egram. Come on through. Mrs. Young also had several other students that placed, including Camelia Chavez, Guadalupe Cardoza, and Maria Lares. Congratulations to Bell's Hill Elementary School. Next, we recognize Cedar Ridge Elementary Students. We have William Pedersen. And Lazar Lee Flores also placed. These students received a rating of three out of three for a perfect score in the state contest. The Cedar Ridge Elementary Art Teacher is Kirsten Neff, and their principal is Erin Congratulations to our Cedar Ridge Elementary Students. Also placing in the competition but could not be with us tonight is Trinity Becerra. She is with her family vacationing right now, and her principal is Isabel Lizzano, but congratulations to Kendrick Elementary as well. The state UIL music program is designed to support and enrich the teaching of music as an integral component of the public school curriculum in the state of Texas. Each year, approximately one-half million middle school, junior high, and high school students reap the benefits of participation in 10 UIL events, including the Texas High School Solo and Ensemble Contest, where our Waco High students, under the direction of choir teacher Brently Bartlett and principal Sterling McGruder, earn top honors. Six Waco High students qualified for the state contest. These choir students excelled above their peers, and you met Adam Perez. He received a gold medal, which is a rating of one, which is superior. And you got to hear the solo that Catherine Schalkeford competed with. She received a gold medal and also a rating of one, the very top, superior. And finally, Austin Coteany received a silver medal, a rating of two, for a rating of excellent, which is incredible. And we'd also like to recognize their choir teacher, Brently Bartlett, of Waco High School, And they actually have a show tonight, so they're going to be racing to get a curtain Congratulations to our Waco High Choir, terrific job! And now we recognize our Texas Elementary Principals and Supervisors Association Region Honorees. Kendrick Elementary School Principal Isabel Lizzano was selected as the Region 12 Principal of the Year by the Texas Elementary Principals and Supervisors Association. And Kendrick Elementary Assistant Principal Diana Guajardo, they are one of only 20 in the state, selected in their respective categories. TPSA honors exemplary elementary and middle school principals who set the pace, character, and quality of education that children receive during their early school years. We want to wish a very hearty congratulations to Principal Lizzano and Assistant Principal Guajardo of Kendrick Elementary School. And we now recognize our community partner for the month of June. Literacy Waco is the recipient of the WISD June Community Partner Award for its efforts to continue the love of reading in our students with an emphasis on teens, with its annual Syntax Teen Book Fest on the Brazos event. Literacy Intervention Team, or LIT, provides youth, young adults, and their families with the tools needed to find the path to literacy. This organization was founded in 2015 by Tracy and Keith Gilory. Thank you, LIT Waco, for instilling a love of literacy in our students. Congratulations, LIT Waco! And congratulations to all of our honorees this evening. And now we have a couple more students from Bell's Hill Elementary to recognize for the Texas Education Art Meet. We have Guadalupe Cardoza. And her painting was called "Her Loneliness." And we also have Maria Lares. And her painting was "Flower Base by the Window." And remember that these students received the highest honor possible in TEAM, called the Top of TEAM Award. Congratulations to all of our Bell's Hill Elementary students.
Now we'll be moving on to item number five, the superintendent's report.
Okay, I have one item this evening, but it's a really exciting item to tell you about, and that's the Tennyson Middle School project. We're almost there, we're almost done with that project. We now have a temporary certificate of occupancy as of last Thursday, June 20th, and so that allowed us to begin to deliver our teacher instructional materials and other items from the old campus from the current campus, and that's really exciting. I was out there yesterday and got to walk around and see things, and it's just looking really great, and we're all very excited. Should be finished by the end of the month. Next week, we'll begin our furniture installation. Also next week, Ms. Barrera says, we'll be working a punch list and inspecting the building. And then the old building is being demolished, and that's in progress, starting on the side closest to Sanger Avenue, and that demolition project will be ongoing and is expected to also be completed by the end of July. We'd like to give you guys a chance to walk the new Tennyson Middle Schools, if the Board desires to do that. It'll be fully furnished and ready for school, and we have allocated some times on August 1st for you all to come. We'll do that in two groups, three if we need to, but we're planning on nine o'clock and 10 o'clock, and if you're interested in doing that, you can let Renee know which time you prefer. I already have one person that's signed up for nine o'clock and one for 10 o'clock, so we have some more slots available. But I'd love for you to get a chance to see it, and I know some of you are busy and may not be able to make it, but we'll accommodate you if we can and want you to see that finished product, well, almost finished. We still have the next phase, which will be the track this fall, but we'll be moving in for school in August, so we're excited about that. It's really turned out to be a beautiful school, so just let us know. Thank you.
All right, moving on to item eight, information, items, and reports. Mr. Grant, do you have any questions or discussion? Mr. Davis?
No.
Mr. Gilory?
No.
Mr. Ochoa?
No.
Okay, we're moving on to item number seven, the Consent Agenda. Mr. Grant, is there anything you would like to pull?
No.
Mr. Davis?
No.
Mr. Gilory?
Yes, I'm complicated a little bit. I'm going to pull 7M to recuse myself from that one for right now.
7M?
7M, it's the acceptance of gifts of $50,000.
Okay.
Mr. Ochoa?
No.
All right. I will entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
So move.
Have a second.
I'll second.
All right, thank you, Mr. Davis and Mr. Ochoa. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Considered.
One abstain, is that one abstain?
One rule where he recused for 7M.
Pete, you good with that? No, okay, talk us through it, Pete. And then another one, there you go. Thank you.
Mr. Vedanya, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, except for 7M.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Davis and Mr. Ochoa. Now we, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then, I would like to make a motion for, to approve item 7M from the consent agenda.
You have a second?
I'll second.
All right, thank you again, Mr. Davis and Mr. Ochoa, and all in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion, Mr. Grant?
No.
Mr. Davis?
No.
Mr. Gilory?
No.
Mr. Ochoa?
Nope.
I think you just move on to the next item, we already voted.
Okay.
So just move to item eight.
Yeah, moving on to item eight, review and discuss preliminary spring 2024 STAR testing results presented by Ms. Denise Bell.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to present the preliminary STAR 2024 data results and give you some idea of what we've begun doing. Before I begin, I want to make an announcement because last year, you know, the scores were so delayed, so if there are any parents who are wondering, an email was sent to all parents the week of June 10th that told them how to access their child's scores with their personal codes and where those were. If you didn't get that email as a parent, TexasAssessment.com, you can go in and sign in and look at your child's scores. You can look at the answers they chose and what was correct and not correct, and it also has some helpful links for parents of things you can do for helping your child. So we're going to talk about STAR 2.0, which is what TEA calls it, and what is STAR 2.0? Well, it was implemented in the spring of 2023. It requires multiple question types, so a lot of varied types of questions for our students. It increased the writing on the test exams, and it is 100% administered online. Things to consider: legislation required STAR to be redesigned, that legislation was from 2021, and it had to begin to be implemented in the spring of 2023. This data does not compare to the STAR 2022 and earlier, so that's why TEA calls it 2.0, because there was a complete change in format, blueprint, and rescaling to create the norms and the cuts. Extended constructed responses are now predominantly computer-based grading, so extended constructed response is a long way of saying essays, or long pieces of writing for students. Scale score cuts and levels for STAR 2.0 were not given until, it says September on the slide, but it was actually July, so the cuts in September were the accountability ones. I got too many cuts that were delayed in my work. But we didn't get those until July, which is, if you remember, the board meeting from last year, when there was confusion about when parents would get their child's score. We were given from TEA last year, blueprints where pretty much we knew this is where a kid would fail because they had this many wrong, and this is where a kid would pass if they had this many right, and literally, TEA called the middle "the zone of uncertainty." So we weren't ready for, it took a while for us to get all of the information back for what STAR 2.0 looked like. There's two ways to review data like this. Today, I'm going to present to you the raw data, which is in the public portal, and then there is the snapshot way, which is a different way of looking at a group of students. That's the data that I'll present to you on accountability, that's the data you would see on taper, so sometimes those numbers don't always match perfectly. And then the rigor of each test varies year to year, so it's based on the collective rigor of the questions individually themselves, so sometimes a kid has to get more questions right than the year before because collectively, the questions were a little bit easier. So why analyze STAR data at all? Well, it isn't just to see the differences, it isn't just to see how far off, the first thing we do is identify trends. We want to know how we compare to the state, both similarly and the differences. We want to make adjustments to curriculum and think about professional development off of those scores, where do we need improvement? And to provide support, so I've begun doing the projecting of accountability performance. Please keep in mind that TEA releases the files, they kind of clean up the data about three times throughout the summer, and they release the scores again, so I check. And I've begun to do a one-on-one session with each principal about their accountability projections, so they can think about how they're staffing, how they're organized, before the school year begins. Also, Dr. Corn Blume has started us on a process of looking at multiple sources of data together with STAR, so that would be things like attendance and discipline, credits and CCMR, and even listening sessions that were done at the different campuses, teachers' opinions on what they thought needed improvement. So she has us pulling all that stuff together to really try to get down to some narrow focuses on what's most important for our kids and affects multiple areas. So we are only a portion, we are in the state's data as part of their data, but we're always striving to match or exceed the state's percentages. So STAR tests are calibrated by the performance of the students every year over time, so each year, all the kids take the test, and that's how they kind of hash out the grading for that. So that means analyzing it, we need to think a little bit differently. So this year, I made a chart for you that compares what areas did we move in the same direction as the state, what areas did we move differently from the state, so we can think a little more targeted about what it is we're doing. So for example, both the state and Waco ISD increased the percentage of approaches for RLA fourth grade, sixth grade, and English II, but both Waco ISD and the state decreased in math, three, four, five, six, and seven. So when the tests pivot one way, we want to see if we're moving in the direction. So I also gave you the places where Waco ISD increased. One of them has to move, social studies eight was actually a decrease for both, I was .5% off. I'm going to create some interventions for my math when I do percents again, but social studies eight goes to both decreased as well. All in all, TEA increased in 27 areas and decreased in 33 areas. All in all, Waco ISD increased in 27 areas and decreased in 33 areas. And if it was even, if it was 17% one year to the next, I considered that an increase because the number of students taking the test decreased. So STAR 2.0 for RLA, multiple choice now has a cap, so a law passed in 2021 caps how much TEA can use multiple choice, and that began with last year's test in '22 and '23. So this means there are varied answer options for students on RLA, things like text entry, hot text, multiple answers, matching grids. So an example, hot text is where the student would answer the question by going back to the story and highlighting the piece of the story that answers the question. That's very different from picking a multiple choice. Also, ELA has two constructed responses, a short one and an extended, and they're both based on the reading selections in the test. That is different, before, the prompts for the longer writings were more general, like, describe a time that you had hope. Now, it's asking you to write about, when did this character feel despair, and how do you know? So it's a different way of writing for the students. I didn't include, as we get into the data, I did not include STAR Spanish because these are smaller numbers of students, so it's kind of making them a little bit identifiable, but also, I feel like they would be better placed in the context of Ms. Grace Benson, when she presents to you on the bilingual, that they fit with that Tell Pass data and the things that she's been working on. I also did not include the STAR Alt 2, which is a test for students with significant disabilities. Again, the final file came in, but those students, it's small numbers, so I want to keep it from being identifiable, but I have those numbers if you wanted. So let's talk about the data. So what I gave you on each chart is Waco ISD's 2023 and 2024 by performance level and grade. And I gave you a column that showed the difference, was it an increase or a decrease? Middle school raw data, again, sixth through eighth. 2023 performance levels compared to '24. And then high school raw data is the English 1 and 2. And just a reminder that the retesters are in this data. Some highlights as we look through this data is that 60%, 60% of our students from grades four to English II showed growth from 2023 to 2024. That's important because TEA redefined growth as students going up performance levels, not just simply increasing their scale score, which is what it was in previous years. So we're getting the students to grow as TEA expects, but another bright light to shine on intervention is that district-wide, we had 516 students who went from failing STAR in 2023 to passing STAR in 2024, and those students were in with sit teachers and intervention. Another highlight is 34%. 34% of the sixth-grade students scored meets or higher on RLA, and that is up from 27% in the year before. Why does it matter? Because students who score meets or better are 55% more likely to not need remediation in post-secondary education, so that can be college, that can be an associate's degree, certificates, or anything like that. This is a huge positive trend for us because improved sixth-grade performance is a reflection of the fact that kids are entering middle school stronger than they have before, but also, this set of students that I keep an eye on were the first third graders to test post-COVID in 2020 and 2021. So we want to keep an eye on the students who entered during that time, just as we keep an eye on where kids were. So for example, the class of 2024 that just graduated, my son is one of them, their freshman year was right after COVID, so watching them make progress, watching the effect of COVID move out of the system is always a positive. The most important thing is what are we going to do with the scores when we take a look at them? So first, we're going to continue to review curriculum documents, this happens every summer, and it is committees of teachers who are brought in to look through the curriculum documents. We're going to review data for all students, that includes the students who need intervention, but it also includes high-performing students who are showing that they're falling back to a level. We're going to do professional development and work in PLCs to look at these types of questions, because when you think about the types of questions for teachers, we've only had two years of the test to see this, and so incorporating that in their classrooms is going to be important. And then continued emphasis and support for student instruction in writing, specifically that writing about the reading, so it's not that that wasn't happening before, it's really getting kids to connect with that writing and reading. So that's RLA. STAR 2.0 math questions, again, no more than 75% of it can be multiple choice. The varied answer types our kids have to complete can be equation entry, where they have to type what the equation is to solve the particular answer, fraction model, where they have to pull things apart on the screen, drop and drag, you're probably familiar with that, they have to graph on the computer for different pieces, so these are worth multiple points each for how students do it. Middle school raw data. I'd like to draw your attention to the seventh grade, I did put an asterisk on it. So this year, we are getting ready to implement Senate Bill 2124. This law requires that any child who scores in the 40th percentile, top 40th percentile on their fifth-grade STAR test... must be automatically enrolled in advanced sixth-grade math. We had two hundred and thirty-five students do that, so it's quite a positive trend. And because we knew, and parents can opt out of this, so we'll be reaching out to parents and letting them know that we put their child in these classes. But a parent can have a voice and say, no, I would rather my child be in this class as opposed to the advanced ones. It's a parent's choice, but we automatically have to enroll them. So what we began to do was compacting the curriculum, which means the goal here is for more kids to take eighth-grade Algebra I, so that they're ready for the higher math at high school. And so we began creating what's called a compacted curriculum, which is tearing apart one and putting it with other grade levels. So instead of the child doing six, seven, and eight, they do sixth-grade math with some of the seventh-grade standards that fit. They do, the seventh graders do eighth-grade math with some of the seventh together. So these children test six, eight, Algebra I. And so the seventh grade, we saw a decrease. And so we're going to examine that for the students who did take the test. What are some things we have to strengthen up? But I want you to understand that there was a shift in the students who took the test. We did this ahead so that we are ready for the incoming sixth graders who will be required to be enrolled. So that sixth-grade curriculum is ready for those students. For algebra, I broke out the eighth grade and the high school for you. It's not something you can do in the public portal, but I thought you'd want to see the difference. Keep in mind, the eighth grade is a small group of students at each campus, and so their percents move really fast. If it's like thirty kids, a couple will move it. And the high schools includes retesters. A highlight, fifty-five percent of our students showed growth in math. Again, the definition of that is students increasing their performance level, going up a performance level for TEA to show growth. And district-wide, we had six hundred and eleven students who went from failing STAR in twenty-twenty-three to passing STAR in twenty-twenty-four. And by passing, it could be higher than that. Another highlight, one hundred and fifty. A hundred and fifty Algebra I students scored approaches or higher who had not passed the eighth-grade math exam. So why does that matter? Students who perform well on Algebra I early in high school, we can begin college readiness testing with them. They're more prepared for that, and they have more options for advanced classes and feeling like they're ready for that. But a notable performance is out of the hundred and fifty, a hundred and three of these were Waco High School Algebra I students. So that Algebra I team and those sit teachers did amazing work. I did, just to see if this was just us, I did call a few friends and say, anybody got triple digits in passing and failing to passing? And no one, no one I talked to has triple digits like that. So that's why that one's impressive to stand out. What are the next steps for math? Continue to review curriculum documents with teacher input with an emphasis on vocabulary. So when our coordinators took a look at the questions students were missing, they noticed that there was some use of math vocabulary that was a little heavier. So they're going to incorporate that into the curriculum. Second, we're going to continue to review growth data for students to make sure that they have instruction and intervention at their rate and the rate that's expected. Professional development and support and PLCs for the question types for teachers. And then something different here is that we're going to continue implementing the math framework. It's an instructional model we began this year. It will be year two for elementary, and it will be year one for secondary next year. STAR two point O for science. Again, multiple choice, no more than seventy-five percent. On this test, students might have text entry, hotspot, multiple answers, drop and drag, worth multiple points. They also have constructed responses. So they have a couple of short answers where they have to write out based on science knowledge. I remind you that biology includes the retesters. And I will say that there was a drastic drop across anyone I've spoken to and at the state in the fifth-grade science scores at all three levels. It was very drastic. What are the next steps for science? Well, they have a big job regardless, because next year, they start implementing new standards. There are new teacs for science, K through twelve, K through all the subject areas. So we're going to work with teachers to implement curriculum documents that are based on those new standards. And just as a note of empathy for the science teachers, they're going to have to do what's called overlap. So TEA took an eighth-grade standard and moved it down to sixth grade. The seventh graders didn't get that standard because they didn't have that sixth grade. So they're going to have to teach and fill in the gaps for a couple of years for that eighth-grade exam. But they will also review and adjust the curriculum documents. They noticed vocabulary was another heavy hitter. Professional development and support for teachers on the question types, but especially the writing, that wasn't a strong area for them. And then incorporate required science lab work into K-12. So this is really about enhancing those lab experiences, more materials, more experiences for students throughout all of the years. And finally, social studies. Social studies has multiple choice, no more than seventy-five percent. Their varied answers also are text entry, inline, hotspot. So inline is as though you're looking at a paragraph, and you have to, you pick a dropdown for a section, and you have to pick which set of words goes in there. And they all read reasonably. It's not like it's Mickey Mouse is there. And the kid has to do that based on their knowledge of primary and secondary sources in history. But they also have to do drop and drag, hot text. They would have to go and highlight a part of a text that answers the question. These are all worth multiple points, and they too have constructed responses, but they're connected to the social studies content. Here's the raw data. And the U.S. history does include retesters. Next step for social studies is that curriculum review that's been going on this summer with emphasis on vocabulary. And as a former social studies teacher, this one, I'm not former, I'm a social studies teacher, right? I'll declare it. But vocabulary is different, because it's vocabulary from Thomas Jefferson. It's vocabulary from Woodrow Wilson. It's not like just terms, like the word globe or independence or revolution. It's understanding phrases that they had. And so the social studies tests are heavy on the reading, where it used to be like, who said this? It'd be an excerpt, and who said this? Now, it's an excerpt, and it's who would agree with this? And it's four people that didn't live during that time. So they might put four people from the World War II era, and the excerpt is from the Bill of Rights. So the kid has to not only read and understand that piece, they have to understand who all those people are and choose the right one, or highlight the right one, or select the multiple people for the right one. We're going to work on incorporating writing more into the content area to support and understand the constructed responses. Professional development and PLCs, again, for the data types. All the teachers have accounts, so they're able to see their students. They're able to see if they return to us next year, all the students that they had, and how they did, what they got wrong, what their essays look like, all of that. So that's work that can begin at the beginning of the year with teachers. And then finally, number four, working on incorporating reading strategies to analyze those primary and secondary sources. So there's always more to the story. TEA did not release ratings in twenty-twenty-three. But we're scheduled to receive them this August, pending potential litigation. And what will happen to the twenty-twenty-three data? Don't know. But for elementary and middle, remember, we focus on growth first. We do have, we will turn that corner of achievement schools, but kids have to all be growing for us to get there for that meets and masters. So for Domain Two Part A, it's fifty percent of their Domain Three as well. So for elementary and middle, it's not about flat-out STAR performance. Most of the weighting that TEA has put on it is for growth from year to year. For the high schools, STAR is forty percent of Domain Two and all of Domain Two Part A growth, and then Part B, and fifty percent. So STAR weighs in for the high school, but not as much. And then available data that I'm using for the projections, we're going to get the files for more of the final files in July for me to continue to check the students. Preliminary STAR Alts, the next file came out after I had done the presentation, but those have to be folded in. Those students are expected to make growth and perform at their levels. And the CCMR verifier is in edit mode. So it's the graduates of twenty-twenty-three, but we have to look through every one of them. And if they're missing an AP score, a TSI score, because those come from other places and not directly from us, we're allowed to take a minute and submit. So we ended up submitting, I think, three corrections. There was a kid's AP score that TEA didn't have, and two students who had passed TSI math that their scores weren't in that file. So we were careful to make sure. So I'll be able in July to give you a better handle, and I'll report in July, and give you a better handle on graduation rate and the CCMR trends. But remember, that's high school. With this data, we're projecting with the available data right now to have fourteen out of eighteen elementary and middle school campuses increase their scores overall. Any questions?
I've got a couple. Thank you for all that. I'll confess, it's a lot of data. And it's a lot of data to bring into a tight, distilled narrative. When you received this data, were you over, not overjoyed, were you happy to see growth? Were you expectant of what it was? Or were you disappointed and the scores lower than what we thought they were going to be?
So I like to tell even the principals that it doesn't have to be pretty. It has to make sense. And some of this doesn't make sense to me. When I look at like this slide all the way back here, where I compared us to TEA, to the state, sorry about that. It's all over the place, right? It's like Math eight, okay, went down all three categories. But if you look at like English one, it's down, it's up, it's at different levels, even at the state level. So I think that overall, I was, as a lot of people are, like confused about why the results happened this way and what's the difference? So that's the part I haven't dug into yet, is there a very big difference in the formatting of these tests? Is there some, because just because they have all those varied question types, TEA can use one of them, or two of them, or eight of them. So the makeup of the test will change year to year.
So in follow-up?
I try not to have an emotional reaction. I mean, I want always what's best. I want to see nineties, I want, I
Right. Our community has an emotional reaction. And there was a data dump by our paper. And I'll say, we got hammered by several folks who don't know the full story. Right? Who don't? It seems to me that we've been sitting in meetings over the last few months feeling hopeful and encouraged, seeing growth, seeing gains. And yet, a data dump came out that seemed to wipe that out in our community, the hopefulness in our community. I'm curious how we, one, don't ever let that happen again, and beat the bad news to the story. Because I think there's good news. I think there's lots and lots of good news.
And I would agree with that. We trended right with the state. We're part of the state's data, and when they went down, we went down. So that pattern makes sense to me. Decreases and increases might be different, but that makes sense. If all of ours were, we decreased and the state increased, then that would worry me greatly, because that means we're not even calibrated. But because we're calibrated to the state, when they move, we move one way or the other. So that's a bigger question of, why did everybody in the state of Texas go down in almost every math area? It's a bigger question. When TEA does their press releases, I've explained this to Dr. Cannon a few times, they don't show the approaches column, they only show the meets and up. So that's high-performing kids, they're just showing that. They're not showing that increase in students getting towards that high performance.
So in that dump of data, all the districts in the region came out. And I sat with somebody who loves our district, who's very passionate about the success, but was very concerned. You know, we were twenty points lower than the state in a lot of ways. And I just wanted clarification on why that is. I would love for us to be able to tell a story in a really concise way that answers that why. I think we need to do that regularly through our social media, through all of our communications, to say, this is a different district, and this is why. But then, tell the truth of it. We made gains in this area. We're really excited about this area. We've struggled here, but it was really disconcerting that the paper beat us, to me, excuse me, just to me. It was disconcerting that they beat us to a new story that, to me, didn't tell the full story.
Right.
And that's where I want to find a way to say, thank you, teachers. Thank you, principals. Well done, students. If those words are earned, if they are earned, we need to get them out there quick and before everything else comes out. Because otherwise, we just have folks that are concerned. Tell me why this is. And we can't sit down with several thousand people and just debrief them on why this isn't what it looks like it is, right? And so if we could have a card, if we could have a one-page flyer to just kind of explains to, whether it's the changes in the testing, the changes in the grading, what socioeconomic differences play, who really are we watching when it comes to, we're not like X, we're more like Y. And if we see our growth and their growth going up, then we, those kinds of things. Because I think we missed out on an opportunity, and I think we took a big hit for it. And boy, I hate to see that.
And the thing about that is the scores that the media gets there from is that public portal, and we don't always get warning. So TEA sends me a file, but it's preliminary. And I can tell you, there were kids on there from Fort Bend. And, I mean, I learned some new names of districts. So the kids had been with us a day, and their data was still, so that takes time to clear up and to solidify and to take a look at. And so by the time we've got that ready, TEA just presses a button and dumps it into the public portal. So I agree with you that we can work on that, getting
It would just be great to find a way, as you've been feeding us information, not preparing us, but to explain the nuances of all of it, that we do that with our community, right? If people had been sitting in on these meetings the last few months, which you can see why they don't, they wouldn't have the same reaction, in my opinion. And so they're not going to do that. So how do we find a way that it's not palliative care? It's just that really cares for those folks that are brand-new readers to something that just is so foreign in the language.
It's really hard. I'll tell you, and I feel your frustration, because I dread the day the state releases those scores, because we don't have the files, not too much in advance of that. And what we get is raw data, and it's Denise's crunching of the data. And so we're trying to make sense of it. We're still processing it ourselves as the state is releasing it. And we are still processing it now and trying to understand it. We're also trying to understand a new testing system that is very complicated and convoluted. And we've got new test questions. We've got, we have level jumping for performance. It is hard to explain away. What I keep my eye on is the overall scores and growth. And you have to understand how to get growth. And so I appreciate Denise sharing how many kids are growing by those levels. And so it's complicated and hard, but we will work on that.
So I
On messaging better.
I want to go to that growth. I go to that column where it's comparing last year to this year, because we, the state is asking the kids to go up a level. That's a lot. Sometimes that's two and three grade levels up from where they were before. So like I gave you the sixty percent for RLA, but if we look at just eighth grade, so I jotted down a sample for RLA for you. But eighth grade, sixty-eight percent of the kids grew one level, and thirty-six percent of them went from failing to passing. So I go straight to growth, but that's not in the public portal, that's in accountability.
And that's what we need to get out, right? So my first question is, is sixty percent growth good?
Yes.
To me, that's like, hmm. But if that's really good,
Right.
Then let's shout it from the mountaintops, right?
The sixty is good and the fifty-five is good, because it's a complete change for teachers in the test. Again, look how many times the state decreased. The state has more decreases than increases, and we trended with them. But the kids still grew. Even though it looks like, from a flat line, just looking at these numbers, it, what happened is that the kids showed growth through the interventions. And sometimes the growth is top students who went from masters maybe coming back to meets, which is still grade level. But for us, we get the ding for it's not growth. So the sixty and the fifty-five were exciting to me, from what I understand, because those scale up considerably. You know, statistically, they're strong numbers for the, for our district. So I can get each, each grade level, I think I texted Dr. Cannon, each grade level has its own percentage, and on top of that, the percent that it grew, and the percent of students who went from failing to passing in one year. That's huge for our teachers. That is a lot of hard work from them. That's going a full below-grade level to on-grade level. That is really hard work, and so you can see that that intervention's working. But growth is not in the state's data. And as you talked about the demographics, I pointed out to you, I mean, the children who take the test are sixty percent ECO-DIS, and we're ninety percent ECO-DIS. So we have to think about, well, okay, then what do we need to do more for our students differently? So we will dig into it, and we will dig into it from a curriculum point of view. But then we're going to start to pull attendance, because we have a lot of chronic absenteeism, pull discipline towards it, what's going on pull discipline towards it, what's going on there, pull teachers' opinions towards it, what's, what did they think that we needed to do? And that's why we have the teachers in the curriculum writing, getting that straight from the, from the classroom voice on, this wasn't really good, and we need to improve this.
I think the message, I think, I'm gonna summarize, I think Mr. Grant is saying, just a way to tell the story for Waco ISD, and the state data tables that come out, don't do that, right? Any reporter could lift those tables from the database and compare us to the state, and they don't tell the whole story, which is why we put, there's more to this story. There's more, there's a lot more to this story.
That's why it's an annual storytelling, right? It's not a once-a-year, be, let's beat him to the punch week before, so that we soften the blow. It's more of a, why is state testing such a bad thing, right? And why is the way the state does it ridiculous? And why maybe should we think about a different model? Because this is how it affects our children. And so if, if our community can get some empathy, I think, for our teachers and students and kids, they're not looking to make that twenty percent jump, I don't think, the community. I think just an incremental, slow two, three percent growth every year is gonna get, is gonna transform the community, right? And so, um, there's gotta be a beautiful way to tell that, because it's happening. I mean, it's happening, and they're putting in the work. We just, uh, I think we missed a way to tell the story.
Right. And that's why I wanted to do those highlight slides. I mean, six hundred and eleven kids going from failing to passing in one year, and it's only the second year of a new test. Anybody who's been in education, takes about the third year or fourth year of the test for a teacher to get a handle on it. But I think what happened is that TEA was told, okay, only seventy-five percent can be multiple choice. The others have to be something else. Well, I just read to the RLA, it's eight different options. So it's like we went from just multiple choice to like nine different types of questions, and it's gonna take time for teachers to get used to that, and then there's technology involved, cuz, you know, they're moving at this pace, and not every program is to be able to help with that. So that'll, that'll be the deep dive into the whys, and there's points where I'll go ask kids. You went from this high level to this low level, I need you to tell me, was it the test, was it, like, what was it about that particular test that, um, even though the STAR tests are not normed to each other, like you could map out grade levels like you can other tests, so they do not compare fourth grade to fifth grade tests. They're considered two grade-level tests. And yet, we're asking the kids to go up a level, to two tests that are not normed to each other. So we're asking a lot statistically, and that's why I wanted to highlight the growth for you. Anything above fifty percent is good in the second year of a test, and a test is complicated. If you're really bored, you know, on July fourth, and your friends are over, instead of trivia, go ahead and put up some STAR questions, because you're gonna see that our kids are really challenged now. It's a very different test, it's, and so we're gonna have to, it's gonna take us a little time to figure out that pivot. Instead of us just throwing every type of question out there for teachers, what's the ones where the kids were unsuccessful?
Yeah, I met with the CEO of the Texas Tribune this week, and I challenged them to write an article that summarizes all of this, because there's not one out there that really explains all of the changes and how it impacted kids across the state. There are pieces of it, but not one comprehensive review of what's happened over the last two years. It's a, it's challenging test.
If what we're doing isn't working, then I certainly want us to be honest about that, right? I certainly want us to make every change we need to make for the, for, for the sake of these children. I don't think that's the story. I, I'm praying it's not the story, and if it's not the story, then, um, I'm done, I'm sorry. Then let's tell a beautiful story.
Any other questions?
Thank you. It's a lot.
Sorry, did you have a question, Mr. Davis? How much, how much time are teachers given to prepare students to take the test? I mean, just the part that's not multiple choice, it sounds confusing. I'm just picturing my own, one of my sons who, if you tell him, highlight something in the paragraph, I mean, I'm just wondering how much we're losing to just confusion.
And, and that's the case, cuz sometimes students who have the test read to them, um, the directions are getting read, and sometimes the kids are like, I'm not quite sure what I'm supposed to do here, cuz one of them is like, drag it over here, and then put it over here. So teachers are looking, we take the interim assessments, which is TEA's, they're field-tested questions, same way STAR is, and they're that variety of question types. We take those twice a year to kind of see how the kids are doing, but that also gives teachers the chance to see if kids are more successful than they thought they would be on particular types of questions. So teachers are getting that opportunity, but again, every year, it could change. It could be there's no drop and drag, and then this year, there's three drop and drags. So there's that mixed bag of possibilities for them. So I think it's gonna take a little time for even experienced teachers to calibrate towards that. But, um, I think they're, they're looking at that in PLCs, but they have access to the interims, and they get to see exactly how the kid did, and it's STAR predictive, and it's pretty spot-on, STAR predictive. So we, that's why we do it twice. We do it in November to get a baseline, and then we do it again in March. We do it fi- exactly five weeks before the test, so that we have five weeks to either reteach or review what the kids really need for that final test. So they're taking the test in the same way. Even the students who need accommodations, they're getting exactly that platform, exactly those accommodations when they take those interim exams.
When you guys did the interim testing, were you, um, I guess, foreseeing that the results would be like this? So if we took one in November, five weeks from the test, are we seeing results like we're seeing now?
Well, that's a good question, cuz some principals noticed that, cuz it gives you a predicted performance level, and in years past, it calibrated pretty perfectly. But this year, in some grade levels and some subjects, it's not all across the board, it overinflated. Right? It overinflated the kids' performance levels. So I sent it an email with, um, redacted data, just to show TEA, this is what your system is looking like, because I personally emailed TEA and got the answer in black and white, are your interims calibrated to the test? Cuz I am not about to have children take a test that is not useful at all. And they said, no, we've done all the research behind the scenes, because last year was the first year, so I kind of get why it didn't calibrate, but this year's the second year. They should've had it together, and so the fact that some of it's not, I've already submitted to them and said, this, you know, that some of your data is wrong in just samples, but I'm gonna do a full study of that interim, because I do not want children to take a test that really isn't a correct predictor, and it has been every other year. And that's why we could say, they're making growth, they're doing this, but this year, it was off in some areas. So that's a good question.
And I heard that from superintendents in some of the chat groups that I'm in, that it didn't predict like it had.
And it wasn't even like in one subject. It wasn't even like it was off in all the math, cuz look what happened to all the math, right? It, so it was some grade levels and not others when I did spot checks with principals, cuz they were noticing that.
I do wanna say, um, uh, Trustee Grant said that people aren't looking for twenty percent growth. I do think people are looking for large growth uh, from our students, so I, you know, and I know that it may not be realistic, but I know that's what people wanna see, so I do agree with the storytelling, I think that's important. I will just say one, one last thing. I know we mentioned about our socio-economically disadvantaged students, and I know that that is a factor when it comes to testing, because of so much, uh, that surrounds socioeconomic disadvantaged students, but our job is to educate them.
Correct.
So I just wanna be very clear that we're not gonna use that as a crutch.
Absolutely.
For our students not performing, but we're gonna do what we need to do to get them to the standards. So I, and I know you're doing that, I just wanted to make that really clear.
Absolutely. As a proud, young ECODIS child myself when I was in school, right? I, we have to, we have to acknowledge the fact that there might be a gap, and we have to think about when we're teaching, how to mitigate that. So if kids read a story about skiing, and they've never left Waco in their lives, it's already a disadvantage when they read that story to the child who lives somewhere else in Texas. I don't know where they ski in Texas. But if a child somewhere else in Texas reads that story, they already know what that looks like, sounds like, and feels like. So it's already a, that's the biggest part of being ECODIS, is that this experiential lack, so we have to work on that. But absolutely, we're always trying to bridge that, yes.
One, one more. Um, the different types of questions, are we modifying the test that they take on a regular basis to bring in some of those different types of questions? So like, uh, Trustee Ochoa said, they're not confused, because this is how we take every test. We're used to seeing the different question types. Is that happening? And if it is happening, why do we think the students might have been confused on the test if they've been taking similar tests throughout the year?
Good, good, it's a good question. So can we, now more than ever, we have to rely on test-writing companies, because a teacher spending the time to figure out how to code it, to do drop and drag, it's not the best use of their time. So companies are only able to go so fast in putting those out, but when our students take TCA, the taught curriculum assessments, those types of questions are put in there. TEA also has an open bank of questions, so there's a video, if you're really interested. Uh, it's a cartoon on how the STAR test is born. I mean, it's a cartoon. And it, it talks about the fact that they field-test the questions on our kids, and then the ones that everybody got right, they don't use those questions, even if it was correct and on grade level. The ones that everybody got wrong, they won't use that. They use the ones in the middle, and they put them in one of three places. They put them on a STAR test, in the interim, so that's why we do the interim as a district, or they put them in, um, a bucket, I can't think of a word right now, but, um, called T-FAR. And those are questions that have been field-tested, and they look like STAR. They've already been, the research behind them is their STAR level. And in T-FAR, we at the district level don't control, like, teachers can't use it. We want them to go play in there. So we've begun to train them, cuz they can pull down just one of those questions, and that can help with lesson planning, like, okay, so the kids did this fact, but now let's put up one of these T-FAR questions, which is field-tested for STAR, and be able to have the kids talk about that. So as a district, we intentionally step back and said, this is open and free questions for teachers, use these. And so we've had, I've had a smattering of teachers who are those pioneers, and they've been playing around with it. The algebra teams at the two high schools, we're building them in T-FAR, and then they're allowed to share across campus. They were building tests for each other. So that has the potential this year for us to, to get teachers access to more to those, more of those questions, but even those are kind of limited. And, because it's gonna take time for question writers, test developers, to develop every type of question, I mean, the equation one alone, one sign off, is, could be the difference between the equation being right and wrong, so we have to kind of get kids used to those. We're giving teachers every possible way to practice, every resource that we have available right now, but it's, it's a desert out there in some ways for what's available question-wise.
Well, the things that we've tried this year as a district, is it data that shows us what worked and what didn't? Cuz I know you said, like I said, Waco ISD decreased, and the state increased, and I see algebra on that line.
Mm-hmm.
But we said algebra teachers were sharing the test. So do we have data that shows, hey, we did this, and we seen a group of teachers do this, this grade level, that tried this, whatever it was, it, it showed an increase, and maybe we tried this, and we didn't see an increase, so we're gonna keep doing this and do less of this. I'm just, that's what I'm trying to hear.
Yeah, our secondary person will dig in with the algebra teachers on, um, what they did last year and what happened. Yeah, and as a, as a data person, I kind of, I'm okay with the algebra in all three, right? Because it shows me something instructional curriculumally was off across the board, we can fix that. We can dig deep into, what did they do? What curriculum resources do we have to adapt? Do they have access to questions? Like, they, they need something from us at both high schools. But that's why I also wanted to highlight, the hundred and fifty Algebra I kids, they were getting kids to go from failing to passing in one year, and so that's impressive, but that story could be lost in the fact that we have the decrease in Algebra I. Any other questions?
And so I, I know you said the, the data and information's kind of all over the place.
Mm-hmm.
And we see that, but, um, as far as like the, the supplemental and accelerated, um, instruction, have we been, been able to like identify the areas of weakness, so we can go in and attack those areas, or is that something that's coming in like July, when you're able to unpack more of the data?
So are you thinking at the, like, the teacher and student level, or are you thinking in that big curriculum, let's look at all the fifth graders in Waco ISD?
Hey, so when you start grouping, you talked about, you know, grouping the students.
Mm-hmm. Interventions, right?
Yeah, interventions.
Intervention groups. We haven't gotten that far.
Okay.
Into analyzing.
But at the beginning of the year, I create a growth tracker for campuses, and I'll do that again this year, because the STAR tests come with, uh, Lexile and Quantile scores, which are a measure of the foundation. So any parent who goes in and looks at that parent portal, if you look at your child's reading score, and you click on it, it's gonna say, your child reads at this level, and it will literally say, here's a list of books that are good for your child. So it's matching. So we use that piece of data and the STAR. And, um, I create the growth trackers for each campus, and the principals fill in the teachers, and we start using that to track growth right from the beginning.
Okay, cuz as, that was, I think it was HB forty-five, forty-five, required that, now I want to see how we were.
Accelerated instruction.
Yeah, fairing in that, in those areas.
And that's the, the five hundred and eleven reading kids, and the s- the five hundred and thirty-five, and the six hundred and eleven.
Okay.
That's that House Bill forty-five, forty-five. They're coming out of that intervention, so it's effective.
Well, I go back to, um, Trustee Grant's original statement. That's, that's something to put out there to show that we're meeting that.
Right. That's why I added those slides this time, cuz if you just flat-out look at the numbers up and down, it's not really the story, and it's not really, okay, so it's up and down, like, what do we do? I figured you wanted slides on. We have already looked at our coordinators. That original file came in, even though it was messy, they already began to look at the questions, the kids, because they're writing curriculum right now. So they were bringing those to those meetings and saying, oh, look at this, and so that kind of brought different conversations right into the curriculum as soon as we could, and then we'll track the kids according, cuz we want our high performers to stay high performers. We don't wanna just say, oh, they, they got that once, they'll get that every time. Excellence for all is what we're striving for.
Yeah, but so, you know, specifically that, I think that's, that's something to put out.
Yeah.
And, and show. But I, I do, I don't think that the community as a whole, uh, wherever, look at the nuances of this, and so the scores matter, and we have to get them up.
Yeah.
I think, you know, that, those charts Denise said, what's, the what's next, what are we doing next? What she didn't say that she does so well is that she meets with every campus frequently, and she goes, student by student, what level are they on? How many points do they need to get to the next level? She looks at each of those domains, and to help them predict where they are, it is that challenging. You have to get in there and really understand every section of that test with every single campus team, and Denise does that beautifully. Um, and we're, we're blessed to have her doing that, because it's really hard work, and it, it's, it's hard to understand the system. It's hard to understand what the numbers mean when they come out. It's hard for teachers, um, to, because you, you've gotta figure out where to maximize the scores within the system, and it's tough. It's a really hard system. I really hope that the legislature will change this system. There's been a lot of talk about, um, just unhappiness in general about the test, um, in the state, since, especially since last year with so many changes. And so I'm hopeful that this will be a topic in the next legislative session, and that some of these issues will get addressed, but it's, um, it's a, it's a methodology that, that you, you just can't understand it unless you understand, uh, you sit down and really study each individual calculation for each domain. Um, and it shouldn't be that complicated. It just shouldn't be.
There's a lot of twelve-hour nights for me.
Lastly, I just thank you for bringing the information.
Yeah.
And, and sharing this with us. I look forward to July, and just, I.
CCMR, the graduation rate, like, is a sneak peek, it looks very good. So I'm very happy with presenting that stuff to you. And this is the first year, just so that you're aware, this is the first year I've done one-on-ones with the principals. We, the last week in June, they had the scores, I had my projection calculations, and they, they, I led them through what's in each domain, and it was a session where it's find Denise's mistakes. So they had to dig deep to see if I had a kid wrong, had a kid right, but that deep dive, as teams, as leadership teams, started to make them talk about things, and so my follow-up with each principal is, okay, let's talk about, these are exactly the kids who didn't grow. Do we understand why? What's going on? Do you have teacher turnover where there was high success? Like, getting them to be strategic now, so that when the kids come in, they've already begun to think about what's going on.
Awesome, let's do it.
I did have a question. I, you mentioned that, um, parents have access in parent portal to see their student's grade level, and it's a book recommendation. The books that are recommended, are they in the library at the schools?
Yes, and I love that side, cuz it also has a link. It, the, those books are always available, schools, they're pretty standard in that way, but it also has a link to the public library system. It says, does your local library have this book? And you can click the link, and it takes them out to the Waco Public Library. I thought that was pretty cool when I saw that, because then even if it's not there, it, the child has access at a public library. But I encourage parents to go read those reports, cuz on the math, it says, these are good math games for your child. These are good ideas you can do at home. It's very parent-friendly, and it's in English and Spanish. So it explains your child's performance, but it gives you ideas and resources that I don't know that every parent realizes. And my kid, when he took them, he'd go in there and look at what he got wrong and what he got right, cuz it'll do that whole breakdown, and he'll see the question, and what was his wrong answer, and what was the right answer, and it has an explanation of those, so the kids can see. We have kids who like, jump right in there to. We have kids who like jump right in there to see that.
Is it, um, do we coordinate with like, um, the outside services? I know we have a lot of book clubs and literacy initiatives. Are we giving them that information? So if you're meeting with Jeremy Davis and I need to read these three books, we're not reading a random book, but we're reading these books that I need to grow? Or is there any coordination with that?
I, I think that's a great idea through the librarian, so that's something.
There is any correlation, but we can look at.
Yeah. We've started to have teachers look, because so many have their own children, looking and seeing what's in there. And I highly recommend when they have a meeting with a parent, pulling up that report, like, logging in with the parent and for the parent to show them what's there.
Okay, I want to remind everyone, this is one test on one day. And we have a lot of other data on our kids to show that our kids are growing and they're being successful. So we, we want to do well on the STAR, but it's one test, one day.
Yeah.
And we got to keep, we don't need to lose sight of that.
10%. It's just the state's decided it's a really important one day and one test.
Yeah.
And so if we need to form a parent committee or somebody to take that on, um, you know, that's, that's my biggest struggle. It is one day. And man, if you're sick that day, if you, you know, I had a kid one time that missed one one year, and the next year he missed three, and so he took a backward step.
Right.
You know? And, and, um, some of it is just so irrational that so much weight is put on this that, um, that in of itself, I think, needs to be a target, a focus of ours.
And there's no buffer. So much weight is put on it, but you completely changed the test in one year. And by the next year, we're expected to have made these tremendous gains when you've changed everything about the test. So probably by the time we get used to this one, we'll see STAR 3.0. I mean, that seems to be the cycle we face.
Maybe education to parents on who makes these decisions about the test and what they can do about it.
Yes.
Might be, uh, important to add when we start telling this story.
I also wondered, I was sitting here thinking, I'm glad you said that because I was thinking, what is the Tasbi legislative agenda showing? Has the, has that group gotten together to set those priorities for the legislative session? That probably won't happen until this fall, but, um, it'll be, it would be good to track that and make sure that that voice is being heard.
Anything else? Thank you.
Moving on to item nine, announcements.
Good evening once again, trustees. Want to share with you that online registration is open for the 24-25 school year. And we are very much encouraging parents to get their students registered so we can plan for our classrooms. Parents are taking the time now to complete this step, and it helps both our school and many of our district departments plan for the new year. And I do know that principals and schools have reached out to every single parent, encouraging them to register their students. Um, campus assisted in-person registration for any students that need additional help is available in the district starting July the 15th. We want everyone to enjoy the quintessential summer celebration of July the 4th. As you can see, I'm all ready for it right now. The district will be closed for the day along with two Fridays in July, the 12th and the 19th, as part of our summer hours. The board's next regular meeting is Thursday, July 18th. A workshop, workshop discussion is scheduled for Thursday, July 11th at 6:00 PM to support the board in finalizing the superintendent search schedule with Tasbi Executive Services. As part of the search process, efforts to seek input from staff, families, and community members are underway now. Staff listening sessions with Dr. Kazanis have gone well, and an online questionnaire is now open to collect input from those who are not able to attend in-person events. Community listening sessions are scheduled for July the 15th at Dean Highland Elementary and July 16th at Bells Hill Elementary. Both events will be in the campus libraries from 5:30 to 6:30 PM. Spanish and sign language translation services will also be available for both of those sessions. And to end on a high note, Waco ISD currently has students who are competing at the National Tasbi Festival in Indianapolis and students who are competing as we speak in the Educators Rising National Competition in Washington, DC. These are students who have the goal of becoming classroom teachers. We wish all of our students who are competing this week much success and safe travels. And please mark your calendar for July 20th for the Waco Independent Film Festival. Two of our university-high audiovisual students have had their short film selected for the event. So plan to get your tickets and be amazed and inspired. And that's all we have.
Thank you. We're adjourned at 7:16.